All right, now we're back again, the usual redo. Welcome to the select board meeting, we'll start at the head table with the introduction of the select board. Scott Ryer, select board.
Dave Gallop, select board.
Tom Arquette, select board.
Dave Barlow, Secretary of the Select Board.
Well, Pat, I'm not getting this here.
Leo Fina, resident.
Eric Keenan, resident.
And then on to you, Deb Tangway.
Deb Tangway, town clerk, town bookkeeper.
And Donna and Lynn?
Donna and Lynn, residents, yes.
Call the meeting to order, six oh two P M on the second of May, twenty twenty two. First item, changes or additions to the agenda.
I have commentary fall festival, some in college you want it.
Other business. That'd be for other business, so, yep. Anything else?
Public comment, no comment?
No, not yet. All right. No other business heard, we will now move on to item three, public comment.
So I've got a request to the select board, I'd like to hand out, so if you guys have, then I'll read it. It's come to my attention, I'm aware that the Herman Smith Road was cool, was on the list to be paved. And I'd like, the goal, the rule is used by many Coventry residents and other Orleans County residents for walking. The road is smooth, quiet, and scenic, my wife and I walk on the road at least a couple times a week, and my wife usually daily. It's a special spot, and it even was mentioned as an asset for the town when we had the economic and community development strategic plan made. And that plan was, you know, we done, you know, was at the advisory of the select board, so one of their things was that the rule is a really great spot for walking, and it would be something that we should try to enhance. So these are the reasons why I feel it's not needed to be paved, that section of road. It is a better path for walkers in dirt, it's better for their knees, ankles, their back. It creates a special character to the entire valley, being a paved road with the river and everything. It's safer for walking because the cars do go slower than they do on pavement. And also from a financial standpoint, I assume, it doesn't say the town either way to have a paved road on that road, considering it's so flat, I don't see the real difference between it. Also, the salt that's needed to pave the road, I mean, to maintain the road is probably not in the best location there, we have too much considering the river is right there, and we're wrong. And also, once we do pave it, there's no turning back. My question is, where is the, what's the decision making to, to pave that road? Is there any, like, primary reason as to why we want to pave?
Can we answer the public comment?
No, we would have to come up with another business.
Has come to other business.
But I think that's how, you can do this.
Because your next item is your paving contract.
Yep.
So that's why I just.
Okay. So you want me to add that to the business?
Yeah.
So, any other public comments? None heard, moving on now to item four. Two thousand twenty-two roadwork bids.
Well, you guys saw the bids, so.
I failed.
So from a, from the money standpoint. Pike's eighty-eight dollars per ton is the safest bet.
So I saw the difference, was the difference between the A C and the O M C?
So the A C is a variable price based on liquid asphalt?
Liquid pricing per month, but you said the state of the law.
So the other one's just a locked-in price, so we don't.
Then I also heard today that it's become so volatile, it's gonna be bi-weekly instead of monthly.
That could be, because it's, it's like two, you know, a week, that could change too.
I don't understand how you could be self-fuel, if it raises and lowers that much, if you're buying, you know, they usually make like fifty or seventy-five cents on the gallon, so. What, you're buying, even a small gas station buying five thousand gallons, they're laying out thirty grand. Right now, I heard their, their new price was six bucks a gallon, but it goes back to five, you're losing thirty grand, if you're only making, it's really, probably really tough.
You know, and that's just like us were running into it, truckers are hauling, you know, mixed horse.
Come on, all.
We're adjusting the rate, but the adjustment's gonna stop at some point. It's a crazy world.
So I'll speak to her a little bit, I spoke with a gentleman today called Norman Patton, Jr. And he's put eyes on the project, we're looking at some pretty high prices. And I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, is. Maybe we can just crack seal those roads for now. And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to shim a many land, right, we gotta shim and overlay in the project. Why would we spend when we have eighty-eight bucks, what we could be looking at? It's obviously, it's not gonna last like this one way or the other, it can't. I mean, the world's so volatile right now, something's gotta give, I mean, if you don't get wheat in the ground in the next three weeks in Ukraine, the world's gonna starve. I think it's something we can wait on, and I think our best bet is to crack seal for now, I just talked to him, that was Chris Magnum from Nikon. And he has plenty of availability there.
I, I. The money's in the reserve, now I can stay there as long as it needs to.
What do you think? I mean, I, I can't see it, I can't see. And I think another thing that's driving it too, it's the same thing that happened in all way, when Obama put out all that shovel-ready money, all of a sudden, everything was four bucks a gallon, and the prices shot through the roof. And the only people that made money were the oil people, and all your paving actually goes down, I mean, if you look at what the state of Vermont's gonna spend this year on paving, I mean, they're not gonna get any extra out of it. It's, and it's a tremendous amount of money, I believe.
And, you know, this is a hypothetical number, but like the interstate project, we didn't, Bartley landed, you know, two-year project. Right now, they anticipate anywhere from six to nine million dollar increase since the bid.
Yeah.
You know, we can exhort that at some point.
But you're protected on those.
Yes, we are, but again, it's gonna cost somebody.
Somebody, somebody, yeah.
Or, you know, kind of funds, whatever, so, it's just, it's an unpredictable thing, you know, who knows, in two months it may go down, we don't know that.
Good, asking, what, how, what was per ton last year's?
We were at sixty-six.
So thirty percent increase, thirty-two. Roads that are good and passable and.
Well, these are roads that are, we're just doing a top coat.
Yeah, so.
This is actually, this, the one we're talking about at sixty-six is actually the Hermanville, so we can discuss that a little bit if you guys want.
Yeah, and I think we can come up with that, too, this one that we're talking about now is just doing. Top coats over. Top coats. Lawson Ridge, Maple Ridge. No.
We're, we're doing nothing new outside the scope of the contract of last year, but that did include the Herman.
Yeah.
That's right, that's what I did read.
And how is Pike Industries gonna make out on the paving this year at sixty-six dollars a ton?
Not good. You know, so, I mean. You know, hopefully that, you know, things can adjust in a month, they may go the other way, just makes it worse.
What else was on for the last year's Pine Hill and Herman?
Pine Hill, Herman Airport.
Airport was a chin.
Top of the station. You wanna gamble? Leaving some off this year.
Well, I don't think we should leave off anything that we've prelocked in, because I don't think it's ever gonna go back down that low again, that would be.
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying from his standpoint. I think Pine Hill should be done because Derby's coming to that point anyway, I really do. But if you want, this, these are my thoughts. You know, I'm just gonna share them, if you wanna gamble and hold off on that same price until next spring on airport in Hermanville, I'd be more than happy to do that.
If you think that'll help you, if that would help you.
Well, it definitely would, you know, again.
Unless it goes to, unless.
Goes the other way, then, you know, you're still hand-cuffed.
I'm okay with that, too.
Think we should, then, let's do Pine, let's do Pine, top of the station, and I'm not doing that stupid turnaround there at Cleveland's. Pine, top of the station, and you could, my total, have Norm shim that little section, my lease right there, that's following. We'll call that a year, if you guys are, agree to it, that helps you guys out a little bit, helps.
Well, yeah, I mean, financially, right now, if it keeps going, it's gonna be a miserable flop, so.
Is, something's gonna give.
Yeah, it's gonna come, yeah, at some point. Something has to give, yeah, because people can, people are gonna be able to heat their house next one, or five bucks a gallon for oil, it's just bucks a gallon.
It was seven twenty-three, two weeks ago for kerosene.
Right. But then, you know, I'm locked in like a dollar sixty for propane from last year, this year, though, I mean, who's gonna be in a yank to lock in, because I bet the lock-in price is gonna be high, three or four dollars, and you're gonna be like, no, I can't lock in, but then. Can you not, not lock in?
Because, yeah, correct, so you're still wanna go to fifty-eight, twenty-eight on that, on him.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So here's a question. Better car.
Yes.
That's what it's called, fifteen twenty. Do we need to update the contract? Because it said, it had dates on it, I thought.
Oh, so you're probably gonna wanna do, you will have to update your.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just write up a new one.
And you'll have.
exclude that and just put in the terms for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
That's the same.
Goes down.
No, the Ghoul Road wasn't on to be paved.
Yeah.
Hermanville is, I. I, I already went to the bridge, right, isn't it? That's on, that's on the bridge.
And Leo's right.
Yeah, I, I agree with him.
It's, uh, it's just so pretty over there, you're gonna fuck it up with her.
Yeah.
How do you feel about it, pretty, you like that?
He wants that one, that's all he wants.
Well, see, too, and I will admit. So, on the road commissioner too, so all of a sudden, you know, a number gets thrown at me of six hundred thousand dollars, and that's a lot of decisions to make in, in just a short amount of time to put out bids and everything. So when I'm, when I'm doing those roads, a lot of it is based on how we're doing our operation as far as salt, so it's not a big deal whether I back into cobs or go down cuttings, one, one way or the other. Evelyn's is such a, you know, that's a great one to have paved. Right. Uh, but also, you know, then I look at the work that we've done over the years as far as, are our call works ready, is our infrastructure ready? You know, and so I make those decisions based in that, on a lot of that. Now, so it is really hard when you get a large number all of a sudden thrown at you, and I'm not used to being having those numbers thrown at me, I will admit to that. But when I do recommend like the airport, so I know that all those culverts have been replaced over the years, I know the Coventry Station, we've done all we can, even though we've had a road failure. You know, so I'm making recommendations to the board based on those decisions, based on what I've done over the time.
The other thing I would ask too, at the top of Coventry Station, or that we're gonna pay this year, if that can be the same liquid, because once we start switching out the asphalt plant, you know, one blend to the other blend, then you need another tank. You know, so what I would ask is, you know, fifty-eight, twenty-eight to be used, Pine Hill and Coventry Station.
I mean, fifty-eight, twenty-eight's a basic thing, it's been used for over twenty years.
Right, part of the law, yeah.
Yeah, but everything in our town, according to Gray, everything he ever bids is fifty-eight, twenty-eight.
We use sixty-four, twenty-two, so we did blend.
So what are you getting at here?
Well, what I'm saying is.
He was gonna do Pine Hill on fifty-eight, twenty, use the same mix, so it doesn't have to have a different tank up here.
As long as our, as long as we're at sixty-six, I don't care. Sixty-six for the whole thing, just like the contract.
For fifty, twenty-eight, now we.
No, we discussed it was more, a little bit more for that per ton.
No, I'm pretty confident in how we put the bid out, and I know the other guys, I've talked to Savini, we talked to Pope. How we bid it was basically, nobody's putting those numbers in there, none of the towns are saying fifty-eight, twenty-eight, I'm putting those numbers in there because I know you two are discussing it. When I called John Morley, he says, I want a base coat, I want a top coat, when I called Stevie General, it's base coat and top coat, so I don't wanna hear that there's a change now. I want to be held to a higher standard after the fact. Nobody does that down there, I can call Mike right now, over in Newport Center, he's gonna say the same thing, we just bid a base coat and we bid a top coat.
Right, but, you know, because of the circumstance out there with the area that was, you know, pumped up to spring, you know, yes, I know you're gonna use more of that on, to me, I think, you know, a better liquid would help.
What was, what we put on the bid for Pine Hill? No, but we had talked about this, because I don't, when you're up there, you said you wouldn't, you wouldn't be opposed to trying it on that one stretch to see if it actually was more flexible, and that's, it's more flexible, right?
And, and so Mark uses that as a standard liquid, you know, he might, I don't know, that's his choice.
So from what Savini and Pope are telling me, these are the tech guys at A O T, that basically everything that any town's doing is fifty-eight, twenty-eight, and that's what's bid.
Yes.
So I don't know why there would be a confusion, why Hutchins was bidding fifty-eight, twenty-eight, why Grazer's bidding fifty-eight, twenty-eight, and now after the fact, you're saying you've done, you've bid sixty-one?
Sixty-four, twenty-two.
And is that what we had, is that what we had on all our roads is sixty?
Yes, sixty-four, twenty-two, yes.
And how much more is it done?
Well, they don't value, I, I can't break it down right now to say, but it was gonna.
Was it like twenty?
It was gonna be, it's gonna be fifty-one, it was gonna be fifty-one, uh, at seventy-one, fifty instead of the sixty-eight, eighty-five.
No, sixty-six.
Sixty-six, sixty-five, so this one from June twenty-first, sixty-six, twenty-five, but I don't see anything about the mixes, that's why, I don't think. Yeah, that's why I was, that's.
I'm gonna stay with what we had. There was no reason for it not to be, is my belief.
Coventry Station, Pine Hill, so.
It's just like the state jobs, it's specified what you're gonna use for it. Every job is different.
So this Coventry Station is that top part?
But there's nothing in there.
Three hundred and eighty tons?
Yeah, but there's nothing in there.
There's no. Right, I guess that's where I'm going, is that, this is from, from the bid here, from what we got. We probably don't know there's any differences, right? Well, that, that's what I'm saying, is Pine Hill and Coventry Station are the same, so I don't know why it would go up sixty-six, sixty-five, whatever you had planned on for the bidding. I don't know.
Back then, where we discussed it early, but that's why it would be a price.
It was only for different material, and the price is for the same per ton, it's just. A different. Is that gonna be the way it would be? Doing Pine Hill and Coventry Station, it'd still be the same per ton, the sixty-six, sixty-five? Well, no, if they do it just per their bid, that's what it's gonna be, sixty-six, twenty-five, if we wanted to get a more flexible material, it's gonna. Oh, we have to change, okay, that's. We're both Pine Hill and. Well, it could be, we were gonna, we had mentioned, we were gonna try it on Pine Hill, and I thought we were on the same page.
I don't, I don't think it's coming to meetings.
That's where I was, because I don't recall it, that's why I was.
I think we'll, I'm, I'm gonna go with the next week, that we.
Both.
That we got there, sixty-six bucks a ton. That's gonna be my bowl.
Make them both the same. I don't, and I'd have to go back and look to me, because I don't recall. I don't think we did, I mean, one time when you agreed the road, I mentioned it to you.
And I did a little research. Like I say, you, you won't find a town of this size stating liquid, what do you call it, P G? I mean, you're not, you're not gonna see a town of our size bidding out seventy, twenty, fifty-eight, twenty-eight, we're bidding now, and we call, we call the guy and say, hey, we're on a base coat, three-quarters base coat, and one, three-eighths top.
But moving forward.
If that's something we wanna review going down the road, that's fine.
In the future, we should, because obviously if someone's using more, a better, a better quality liquid, it's like using three thousand pound cement, four thousand pound cement, or twenty-five hundred mix, or whatever, it's, costs more.
And that's something I'm gonna recommend under the town administrator description.
You know, some towns do require different grade of liquid, depending on where they're putting it down, and what they're doing.
You know.
Yeah.
The only thing is, in the original bid, everybody, especially Pike or any of these companies, knew what they were bidding to do with it, so you would assume that if a certain location took a certain type of material to do that part, they would roll that in, and they knew what this other part was.
That is, that was where my point, where I was going with it.
Well, it's kind of a situation better to, to provide you the material that you're assuming you're getting.
I don't think any of our other bids ever said anything about what type of material they were using, but going forward, I think it would be very important to get everyone on the same mix. Right, it would make sense.
So. But no towns do it, I'll come.
Yeah, they do, that's wrong, it, some towns do.
Bigger ones.
Not necessarily, different ones, you know.
Derby just put out, what, three-quarters of a million dollars, and General said it's a three-quarter base, and I've been stopped.
Like your bids, your new bid that you gave us, you're lower. We're using the same mix as you quoted us last time?
Yeah, that's a fifty-eight, thirty-four, everyone.
Fifty-eight, thirty-four.
Fifty-eight, twenty-eight.
Twenty.
Fifty-eight, twenty, but the other, the other. We don't know what they're using to compare. There's a better, there's a better mix in fifty-eight, twenty-eight, too, probably, right?
Oh, yeah, fifty-eight, thirty-four, either seventy, twenty-eight, we used the seventy, twenty-eight on the interstate. You know, that's a state spec, and that's a lot more money. You know, we got a lot more volume of vehicles, and, you know.
More weight, more everything, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, so, and, you know, we're doing pretty only notch, and it's seventy, thirty-four. So the number as, as the elevation gets up a little bit higher, the higher the number is on the other end, you know, it's more flexibility, so.
So, as far as these goes, we're, you're, we're suggesting the table, I mean, wait until twenty, till twenty-three to put it out again, and.
They're gonna hold off on, you guys wanna hold off on the airport or the mail for now?
Okay, so let's do this, let's do this two ways. Because we have to vote on not doing this, I think. I'm gonna make a motion that the bid that was put out for Lawson Ridge, Maple Ridge, Cover Bridge Road, we table this until twenty twenty-three? Or the end of twenty twenty-two to put out the bid?
And do we say that, or just not accept?
Or not accept, over the rate we.
David?
Well, I guess.
You could do it either way.
Okay.
If you wanna rebid it again in twenty twenty-three.
We could actually, the, the funds are already set aside, why don't we look to rebid, rebid it towards the end of summer? Need a motion or vote on that, because it's just, we're not gonna accept any of the bids, and it's gonna table until. Yeah.
Right, because the reference marketplaces are too high.
Yeah.
And the table is totally come down.
But we. Yeah, so there's not gonna be a motion, yes, it's just gonna be.
But we allow.
Due to the.
No, we'd probably have to vote to not accept it, right?
I'm gonna recommend that you do.
Okay.
Rebids.
Then we'll do that.
And, and the reason why, because market condition.
And we also want to.
You, so I'm, I'll make a motion to. Not accept any of the bids due to the market condition. So. Oh, is in favor?
I.
Now, do we need?
Going in the future, though, with bids, let's get them all on the same material. It makes sense, I didn't realize it was a difference, but I never asked, until you've mentioned.
Right.
So.
And we do.
So how will we approach the other part of tonight's business as far as letting Norm wait till next spring, and we're gonna just wait for another meeting, and he can. Rework, work your contract.
So if you bring us another contract extending the dates on the other two roads and, and, you know. Doing Pine Hill this year, that ton of junior honor, does that same price through next?
Spring.
Next of July, or June, or July.
So you want us to carry the sixty-six, eighty-five through twenty twenty-three?
So that's your gamble, I mean, it's gonna be up.
That's up to you, we're just putting that out there, for, if you wanna not pave those roads this year, and then maybe we'll discuss, we'll take that Herman off, right? Put it on to something else. But well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't.
Let's.
We'll leave the contract the same. The timing.
We don't need to do anything tonight, just, you make up your mind, if you want us to allow you to hold off till next spring, take that gamble and get back to us at the next meeting.
Sure.
Go there.
Okay.
Good?
Very, very good, thank you.
Onward we go, item five. Meeting House.
That part of this bitch, too. Is this big part of that?
It is, actually, it's part of my update, you're giving you, this is the, turning the show back over to me here for a meeting house update, the painting bid. I've got the draft here, just, I'm looking for your permission to push the go button, I'm getting it out advertised. I've highlighted two things on the screen for viewing audience as well. The, the neighbor, I apologize to him again, yeah, I'm forgetting his name.
Gerard.
Gerard, thank you, came over to see me this afternoon to talk about the potential for lead paint on the existing building and the preparation. That would be involved in painting, and is concerned that that preparation work be done by appropriately trained personnel in a lead paint environment, if in fact there's lead paint on the building. Which was always my intention, it's just a question of how we worded in the bid advertisement, I am, I'm wording it there, including lead paint precautions, it's part of what they need to look at for their surface prep. That may not be strong enough, I don't know.
Should we have the paint tested? I don't think they actually do it, I think they just take the precautions and paint, paint, because that's what they did to test it, though. You can, but, well, I guess they were, what, the way they did in my place was they came over, scraped it, took all the precautions as if it was lead paint, and then just. So they wear masks and gloves, and then type it, and everything. Oh, they.
Is the concern.
Put the tarp down on the ground and catch it all.
Yeah, dust indoors, they got that close to, I don't think, right, pretty.
Yeah.
Or, or close, or in the village.
Right.
There's, there's ample reason not.
So I guess it's just a bigger concern than just wearing masks, because now you have to worry about that going in the ground, blah, 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 because it's a pretty big structure. We don't really know that there's lead paint on it, um, now. When was it painted last, was prior to that?
And that's part of what they take care of.
We don't really know that either.
Billy claims he used latex, but I know there was another pain.
Did he paint in it before?
He claims.
That doesn't look like latex.
Nah, but there was another, I know, uh, I think, I'm pretty sure, too tall, that at least this side toward the road.
So the, there's, I think, some merit to testing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a question of, can we get that done in a timely manner?
It shouldn't take too long, usually.
I think Caleb, so I asked Caleb about it. And I think, oh, I was getting confused, because I called the landfill about what I should do with the wood that was being removed right now. And the only thing they said, and the only thing they were worried about was, I asked. And the only thing they said, and the only thing they were worried about was asbestos. And Caleb come and ask, I called cat Caleb, uh, he came down, he said, it's wood, he says, I'm not.
There's no asbestos.
There's no asbestos there. So I don't know if I did, you know, I talked to the girls in the office and I talked about getting a dumpster, but I don't think there's gonna be enough material to worry about.
Until they start the roof.
With with the amount of building materials that they take in, I don't believe that they require lead testing before it goes in the landfill.
I don't think so either. I don't think lead's a big factor in the landfills, more about a.
Reading environment.
Yeah.
Reading and reading, yeah.
There's a few brand that I wanna go test it, I think, I got it done like last year. Called them within a week, they were there, test results were back within a couple of weeks after. So I think within a month. Was that through the state or? Yeah, yeah. Well, at my place, I got a.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was a.
So there's a Jay Gonya that lives on Billings Point.
It wasn't Jay, it was someone else. But the thing is, what parts of the, which piece of paint you wanna test?
I was gonna say. They do a.
Samples everywhere.
They do, they bought chicks.
They've got a. It depends how they do it, but there's a visual way to do it.
Or can we just have someone take the precautions like it is? Which way is gonna be cheaper?
It might be cheaper to get tested. Might be cheaper to get tested than we know.
And then say, okay, it's not lead, yeah.
Right.
It'll be cheaper in the long run if we don't get sued.
Right, so let's take the precaution. Yeah, exactly. You'll find a visitor with it.
So I know like, uh, in talking to Billy last year, he admitted, so all he said was he had a, uh. A guy that was certified in lead paint removal.
Yeah, so that's probably the normal state person renter thing.
Yeah.
And then the rest is the actual execution.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we don't know how thorough. Execution.
Is it that right? I mean, I'm certified in my paint, cause I have that thing. Mine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the mine was just a few windows that I worked though. It's not that complicated. I mean, basically, you almost have to behave like you're in your aunt's house. It's super particular than your.
Like a vacuum and dust.
Yeah, you have to isolate that zone where you're working, you know, if you were only gonna take it off that one window. You have the plastic that all scraped it down, because it's inside. When you're outdoors, then you can't let any of it speak. Which I think whoever scrapes it anyway, isn't gonna want all of the ground that you wouldn't believe.
No.
Even if it isn't, so.
It's just. How you get challenged, it's not unsustainable.
It's a big, that's a big challenge trying.
Yeah, when you start dropping from sixty feet.
Yeah.
Winds blowing.
Yeah. Containment.
So.
Let's get it tested and then hopefully it's not lead paint and then we can just get paint.
Then we can put the bid out. Yeah, uh, Mr. Gerard was telling me, he thought it had been painted for the last twenty years. And anybody would know he was, I guess, cause he's.
I was trying to think.
Didn't hold up very well. Cause it's looked bad for at least ten. It's looked bad since we used to trick or treat with the kids.
It hasn't been in the last, hasn't been in the last twenty, cause it hasn't been. Since I've been here.
I don't ever remember.
We used to go to church way back when we first moved into town, that was thirty years ago.
Did they paint them?
I've got a newspaper article from nineteen seventy four that documents that it was painted in nineteen seventy four. That, of course, was, well, you know, nearly fifty years ago, so.
It's been something, I think.
Could I believe it's been nothing painted since nineteen seventy four? Yeah, maybe, but.
But but even if it has, how do we know whether it was.
It was taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, it was painted over, right?
As opposed to scrubbing it all down.
Yeah. So.
It's a town that have a record.
I think, yeah, I think.
We make updates, it's there, we know it's not bad. Find out what it takes to get it tested and then.
I mean, you could word the bid to say the bid needs to be presented both ways. If there is lead, then the precautions necessary by standard, or if there's no lead, what would the price be?
Yeah, bid at both places, you could, right, we could get the bid out, at least we get the bid until we're getting it tested.
Yeah, I guess if it is, we'd plan.
Well, we might even miss it now too.
Yeah.
So do you want me, would you guys like me to reach out to different companies?
Well, Prinny, don't you know where we're getting tested?
I already gave David.
Alright, so we're good.
Who was it?
Part and every green environmental.
Alright, so we're good.
So let's get it tested, throw that thing in the paper.
Yeah. So just reword it, so it is. One with blood, lead precautions and one without, and who knows, maybe we get ones. We might, hopefully, if somebody can't do the lead precautions, they at least still put a bid into painting if it wasn't. Did, um, did gentlemen get ahold of you for the, uh, windows? Did he ever just phone by Marty?
No, that was part two of my. My ass tonight, was you want me to draft that? Request for bids as well. To do the windows.
Yeah, separately, you could do it on the same one.
I was gonna do it separately just because it's such a different, really different level of action. It's something you can do with a winner.
I can, he said he was gonna drive by and he could tell from the outside and then he was gonna get back to them, but I haven't heard from him.
Maybe acceptable if they did them one at a time. It could take years. It's just such a kind of work is.
So also on, I'll get off subject. I know you'll love it when I do that, David, but. So on that window that Paul has covered up, there is, the window is fixed in in the basement. Did I mention that?
No.
So it's actually right there in in the basement. As you walk in, that window is the one that they had, they, Paul took it out and added repair.
Oh.
I just never put it back.
And put it back.
So the glazing and the one Marty was.
The, the town hall in Ironsburg was painted nine, ten years ago by the visiting. They still do or is it worth it?
Good and bad, I tell you, I had it for brush, doing brush. Can be brutal.
Right.
So you know, by the time they get up here from Saint J.
Right.
I know the town hall didn't hold up.
They built the cabinets for.
I can on certain things, I guess. You know what it all comes down, it all comes down to the supervisor.
Right.
The guard supervisor. It just is, if you get that right guy that's ramrod and then it goes pretty good, you get a lot of your, uh, there is a cost, so. The rest of the time, it can be like having. Twenty teenagers around. Bag of weed.
Alright, so I'll call that one guy to, I mean, we're getting bids.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna get that many people who wanted. Re-laze the windows.
We may have to go hard line for that, but there are people that specialize in that work.
This guy, you know, Marty Gilbar. And a painter forever, I think.
Is he the one you mentioned that might be?
Yeah, and I talked to him, yeah, he just works alone, he just worked for Ian Brown, painted. Cause he's done, he's done.
And actually, is there any, we discussed.
No. When the roof can get done, the roof gets done.
Okay, so. Now, one item six. Item six is the property line. We missed that's the town garage, sixty nine Main Street and parcel next door, two fifty one Main Street. Our viewing audience, I can share this. Our attorney investigated, she has written an opinion that in fact the town owns that particular strip of land. I have had communications with the other parcel owner, Mr. Codd, he has agreed that the town owns that piece of land. He did request his grant be returned to the parcel next door, two fifty one Main Street, inform the road. And. We, uh, it's, just to summarize, it's it's mentioned in all the deeds, and it's. One of those rare cases where it's crystal clear. We have two surveys that show it, um, to back up the deeds. Um, there's just no.
So those, so those.
Except that, um, Mr. Cobb is right, the tax map. That the town has is ambiguous when it comes to that, uh, those two parcels, so.
So I was kinda gonna, I was kinda going in, I was kinda going in, so when that, that was done years ago. That tax mapping, right?
The tax market is updated.
It's updated supposedly every year, but that, those two parcels would have been part of the original.
Yeah.
So those are just. Those can't be assumed to be absolutely correct when you're looking at.
No.
Not tax.
In in any way, shape or form. It's just a generalization, kinda like that Patriot thing, took away acres of my land. And we're paying fifteen hundred bucks for.
Yeah, the tax assets are not authoritative. They're just. Deed, they give you an ID.
Remember when it came out? My dad, we had a parcel up in, uh, the town, had a parcel up in Gore. And they could never find it. And he always had me go to the Blake boys, cause they knew the gore like the back of their hands. They were smart, smart guys, but could never find it. And then that guy, when he did the computer generation. Found that law and John was like, son of a gun, he said, so I never thought this, it had to have been there, you know? So he did some good, but you know, it is just a generalization.
Yeah, did you find it though?
Yeah, and we sold it off. Uh, I think Kevin ended up, I believe Kevin ended up buying.
Well, I, I agree with it.
There was a tax here, we taking it in a tax.
But I I have found the tax map, it's actually pretty darn accurate. But you can't take them out in the field and look at them and figure them out. You just can't.
It is, it isn't, it is a handy tool.
Tax map.
It's a tax map.
Survey map, right?
It is based however on the deeds. Quite closely based on the deeds because that's the way it has to be.
Well, it wouldn't really make sense for the town not to own that piece of land next to it, like right. Where the fence stopped to make sense, that's where the property lies, and it's correct, that's good to know.
So, item seven, all my favorite, town administrator job description and advertisement. So I. Uh, based on what I found on Amanda's computer files, I.
Gonna make changes.
Hey, I'll commit a few changes. The, uh, share those up on the screen here. Might as well just go to, write to the position description, because the advertisement is taken, it's from the position descriptions, abbreviated for. And. So I highlighted the areas where I thought, um. We probably ought to fill in the blank, or I made a major change. So right off of that, um, previously, when you advertise this, it was just a. Didn't have numbers, but when I see, uh, the advertisements that are out there right now, that we'd be competing with, there's numbers. And I think we could reasonably put in, uh, just a wide range, just to give people an idea of what. So we were paying it sixty K a year. To me, that would be given. What's happened, salaries, inflation, like, I mean, that's probably one, one you wanna make that your base or something close to that. And then maybe run it up to seventy five. Again, if you, you know, if you find somebody that's had a good, a good grant, a record with grants, and you know that somebody's really.
Right, can pull in two hundred thousand.
You know, bring it to the town and pay for themselves. Versus, uh, somebody like me who has no record with grants, you know, you don't. So this wasted a lot of money, I guess, is my.
I think that's what we should put in there, starting paying ranges between sixty and.
That's just like.
So how do we do that, given, uh, I know we made, uh, exception with Kate there, like my first year where. Like first meeting, she came in and we went above what the voters had already just approved.
As is, how's that work with a budget of nine items?
Well, it's an excellent question. I don't have an excellent answer for that, other than you can reprogram.
Well, by the time we hired someone and say it wasn't the seventy five, that saying we had to hire someone, this person was perfect. And it was seventy grand and we were paying sixty. The ten weeks that we haven't had an administrator are fifteen, by the time we find, find one, we'll still be losing our budget.
Yeah, the hiring lag is full.
The one item, the budget is, the budget is six, sixty three and a half.
So you've looked at the work, David, and it's probably overwhelming to you with all you've got going on and and you're learning. But at the end of the day, it's an overwhelming amount of work. Could you really make a fair assessment of that?
If you're writing grants and doing a good job and, you know, working with the planning commission and really trying to accomplish and get things done. Forty hours is adequate.
It's a full time now.
It is a full time job, yeah.
Especially if you have customer facing. Responsibilities, so that's something that the Amanda did for several years, but then got away from, then never did it. But if you were. You have a few hours per week where you, you have an assistant clerk hat on, basically, you're receiving payments and. Customer facing stuff.
When people come in, when no one else is here, you gotta talk to them.
You're right, dealing. Maybe just specific hours a week, not all the time.
Right.
Cause it's all the time, that's all you do.
Right.
Uh, but.
Only when like you're, you guys aren't here.
But this is kind of in the weeds discussion, I guess, I dragged you into it here. It definitely can be a full time job if you were especially pressing on the grant side. And not only about getting grants, but executing grants. So, for example, now we have the sidewalks, so we study grant for a bit here. In the execution of that, like I think the getting of it took some work, but the execution of it has proved to be troublesome. Yes. Other grants are the same way, uh, or the money that from FEMA and from the state floods and that. All that, there's, um, in the past, there's been this kind of presumption that. Both from Amanda, especially from Ned, that, hey, I got the grant, your treasurer and clerk, go do it, and planning committee. Well, it doesn't really work. That, that level of management needs to stay at the person that got that. Went and got that grant, and in our case, it's only gonna be that kind of thing. So there's definitely, there's lots of recurring work being, being in that job. It's just. Point out the, the, I added as the number one preferred qualification right up the very top, self-starter. Collaborative leader demonstrated ability to work with minimal supervision. I use the words demonstrated really meaning, that's code for your applying for a job. You better prove it. You better be in your application that you're demonstrating and you can do that. What's your portfolio that says you can do that task? That demonstrate. Um, if you show up without that, I'd be real suspicious that you're not paying attention to what we're asking. Now, I used demonstrated a couple other times in here as well. Versus just, right, we, we'd like to have.
I think, like you say, if we had that wide scope of salary too, and I, I mentioned this when Amanda Richardson was talking about getting done. You could also firm out your grant, right? Instead of give that person a percentage of a grant or whatever, however they do that.
Right, do they take ten percent or twenty percent?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I get advertised all the time for the country combination for, for people who will write grants, you know, those organizations, that's what they do.
Yeah.
And there's five individuals, I mean, three in the community around here, that do grant, like, one lady in Irisburg, she spent twenty thousand for the. The library in, in Ironsburg.
So for the most part, most of the grants that we're looking at, applying really hard difficulty, AOT. Uh, I think Amanda and I overcomplicated Pine Hill and Glenn because we pursued a tap grant. Along with the Vermont local roads grant. And the tap grant, you know, is a federal one, and that one. They said, you know, you did a really good job, but you're looking, you know, they were talking three hundred and thirty thousand. But at the end of the day, financially, we were better off to take a hundred and twenty from small local roads. Cause you're gonna be four years, you're gonna have archaeologists looking. Because you're going to be four years, you're going to have archaeologists looking in the brook. You know, you know what I mean, so most of that grant stuff isn't that.
It's gonna be at the state level.
But that's.
Yeah, a place that does get complicated is, I believe Amanda mentioned that, uh, grant for, um, the water department. It's not just getting that grant, like you said, it's now administering that as you go along and making sure that's all done, right?
As a grant administrator would be one of the jobs that.
But that's one, like, yeah, you say the roads are, but there's plenty of other things in town, we could use.
Turning it off to you guys, the job we described as a grant administrator. Was it part of the job?
Well, we have, we have grant writing in there, I believe.
Right, writing, but not administrative.
Grant writing slash administrative. Right, and I, I guess if, after we have this out there for a couple of weeks, and maybe we get some hits, maybe we don't. We may need to take the grant writing out. And possibly, and, and then possibly hire grant writing.
Like I say, some of that, some of that stuff is pretty basic, it's make sure. Every question is answered, make sure all your data is correct, presented. You know, as far as the ones I've been involved with. So it's almost that simple than do your introduction letter. So it's almost that simple, but a lot of that, even a lot of that, I never knew it was AOT would do that for us anyway.
So my two cents on this, I'm not entirely sure that the town administrator position, even though the grant writing is a full-time job. I think there's a, you can shed off some of the hours, so my thought is. Why not open that up for folks who might be interested in part-time as well, or if you do it three days a week or something along those lines, with, because. Two things, right now we're saying let's raise our base to sixty because of financial considerations, what if that changes over the future? Now we're hiring someone at a much higher pay than we would have at other times. Uh, and two, just based on previous track or from what I've seen, it's, I don't think that there's a full forty hour worth of work in there, so.
Well, it's kind of, that's kind of what I was asking.
He's in the weeds of it right now, and I think.
Well, I don't think it's overwhelmed with a bunch of stuff, but.
That's what I, that's, that was the question I was asking you, dude.
Amanda's worth fifty, sixty hours.
If you'd have been doing this for.
Cause she was doing it.
Six months.
She was going human beyond just.
Right, she was on it.
My point is to get the.
You know what I mean, you, you, you've got a learning curve, you've got a learning curve, you're building a house, you're doing everything else.
Right.
You're, you've got what, seventeen jobs in the town?
They know.
Bringing home.
I've just got a lot of stuff.
Bringing home two hundred and forty-two dollars a week.
Right.
But can I just, being in two different towns, okay, with my business in Irisburg, okay? I basically, these two towns are almost identical, in population, in, in size and amount of roads. I mean, it's amazing how Irisburg is averaging, uh, the average income, the whole shooting match. So the only real difference between the two towns is the dump, okay, and, and really, that's the only thing, and, and. And if you're looking at Albany, same thing, none of them had full-time administrators, they have, um. Irisburg is now has an assistant, you know, for the select board, they have like a select board secretary as well. Um, and they do have a full-time kind of clerk, we don't, I believe, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what they have to leave them. Yeah.
Right, but our town clerk in Irisburg also is a treasurer, so, and she works full-time, you know, thirty-six hours a week, I think it comes out to. So what I'm trying, you know, the goal, you know, when we're at, what do we gain? For our town to have a full-time town administrator?
Well, you, you say that, but you can't gain a lot if you've got that personally.
You have that there.
Being a self-starter, getting those grants.
Right.
That's a big hit.
Yes, and administrative.
And another, and another thing, when you, when you're talking about grants, is a lot of these towns can't platform, there's any of them.
They're on the commash, right, they're on the matching front.
There's a lot of things the administrator can do, like.
There is.
And it's, it's, it comes down to from, it's on development plan, like you had mentioned, there's, there's things in there that can be done. That if you had a part-time person, they're not going to get any of that stuff.
Right. Depends, well, my point is exactly what you were saying, that there's a lot that a administrator could do. But instead of getting stuck with someone who might be able to do things, if we open it up with. This is a part-time position with a potential of it being a full-time position, now we have some incentive in there, where this person's coming in and.
To show this off.
They're doing the basic work first, I see.
Yeah. Show the self-starter.
It's, 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 it's a catch twenty-two, because, because you're, you're gonna be so. That twenty-four hour week person is so hard to get, and you know, I'm, I'm gonna go just retire from the service at fifty years old. Where you can hire him part-time, you know what I mean?
And get him to work fifty hours.
Retire. But, but you know what I mean? So it becomes. I, I, I under, I understand, I understand your point, and it really is a catch twenty-two, is, it's who are you going to attract with that twenty hours?
Question, I mean, if you were to look at the job, how much it would be what you would consider a clerical administrative. Person who would back you guys up, gets the job done, takes all the lawyer, does the checking with A O T.
Fifteen, fifteen to twenty hours.
Okay, now that type of person is really a lot different than somebody who is a grant writer, a grant administrator, or grant. Person, they, this, this is a lot more schmoozing and, 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 and doing, you know, seeing things get through. And this person just comes in and gets the job done, you know, they're, they're really a lot different.
I, I disagree with you on that one.
Okay.
I think the skill set is remarkably similar. Yes, there's more outward reach for a grant writer and administrator, definitely. But it's still about detail work.
Yeah.
This is all detailed.
Like filing, just filing, like nothing was filed for the last six months, right? Year, year.
Year.
Yeah.
Is, but my point is, is the first kind of this position is a thirty, forty thousand at the high-end position.
Yeah.
Yes, what we're discussing, secretary.
Administrative, administrative assistant.
They're not making decisions on hiring, firing, they're not risk assessing, they're not doing any of that type of stuff, okay, so. So they're really more in that type of role, then you've got your other position, which is much higher functioning, le, almost legalistic, you know. A lot of legal jargon, a lot of stuff associated that you guys, you know, depend upon your administrative.
In theory, they are going to try to hire and fire them.
Depending on if you throw that.
You know, that's like last, last week, when we had Bill here, that was your job, the correct.
I'm the secretary of the select.
Yeah, but you know, you know what I mean, that was, theoretically, theoretically, if we're putting our trust in that person. That's, that's, that's something that does not get on the agenda, does waste two seconds of our time.
Yeah. I'm gonna put on, uh, to that, with us being so small and very few employees, I don't think that need to be on to them, I think it could be on us.
Right.
Be one thing if there were five, ten employees under that person, but yours fall under you. And under that one, there's only one employee, so.
Well, there's, your treasurer's now on the board.
We can, we can get back, we can get back down to, back to the money thing, let's get more back into the qualifications and, and the job description. Getting over this for hours.
I mean, yeah, I mean, can we just put?
Fill us up with questions. Difficult one, so, uh, it, it's all either the same or extraordinarily similar, except for the highlighted parts. So I added the self-starter collaborative leader administrator, like work with minimum supervision, I think that applies to whatever. Right, because you, none of you want to come in here and supervise me in my present role or.
No, I want an email and I have to answer a question.
Right, so, you want a self-start, you do. Uh, and the collaborative leader department has to do with being able to be the boss without. Having to tell everybody you're the boss, like you, you're in charge and.
John says, John says, shut up.
No, your treasurer might quit if he finds out that his boss is.
Yeah.
Yeah, structure, I don't, anyway, it's not, not me.
That's what I was wanting to do, he was wanting to.
So it, page two, where there's a bunch of new stuff, more significantly different. Put in the line about the municipal audit, it was something that wasn't in there, is Amanda did it, she did this task. She was leading and, and should be, because audits are mostly about policy, they're not about count money.
The. You didn't get much help with that last year?
Um, it, it took a little beating, but eventually it did, you know, you hit, you hit enough with a big stick, you get it after a while. The, uh, and, and the fact is, we haven't actually finished twenty-one yet, that's another kind of thing hanging out there, it's audit from twenty-one. It's not, it, it's the COVID really did kill us now, but that's a whole different topic, but it.
Yep.
Should be part of what the town administration does, uh, maintain the town's official municipal website. I guess there's an implied technical task there that you might get a good candidate, otherwise that can't do the technical piece of it, but it's still.
That type of thing, I would hope that people wouldn't like shove off. Because of one item on here.
Right, it's really, you could maybe word that a little bit differently and say.
Well, there's been, and, and it's not just that.
Yeah, you're just.
Paying attention to it. You just, right, if upgrades need to be done. If we hire, have, give it to our tech guy to do, or if they can't do it themselves.
I can modify that. Serve as a general purchasing agent for the town's municipal government, the exceptions to roads department, that again was something Amanda was doing. Wasn't in the specifications, um, I think it really should be, especially if you're built for a full-time person, that definitely needs to be in that portfolio. It doesn't mean that that person. Manages the money or anything for any of that, it's just, you're the, you're the primary with the credit card and the accounts to go buy stuff. Except for roads. Equity approval, the select boards, the town's agents signing municipal contracts, agreements, purchase orders and similar matters. There was something similar in there before, but this, I think, I kind of make that clear. Uh, supervise all human resource functions in the municipality. Before it said, maintain the personnel files. Which was an issue, and.
Yep.
But this puts the whole portfolio in there. I had a thing about the.
I like the last sentence on that one.
Annual.
The flood zone administrator.
That too. No, the, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Just very specific about the annual report.
Why are you laughing then?
She was involved in delivering the meetings this year, as was I. To get what you got, which was also still what you got, so.
So, on the, uh, we keep putting everything away from roads. And I, I don't think we should, uh, eliminate the position. Well, I don't think that position, I think that position should be included in the roads with the help, you know, because if they want to pursue the grants that we want.
Uh, where are we talking about? The only place I think.
You had, you had, you had a couple of things on roads, you know?
Oh, with the exception of the, of the, right there, that, that one. Right, they would probably be purchasing agent for, that's what you're talking about.
Well, like at times I've used the credit card and everything, you know, I'll be down lows and I'll have to have them call in a number or whatever. You know, like last fall, I wanted to get a ten or something.
Well, I mean, it's. Yes, uh, I guess my caveat could be, do you want the town administrator to be? Have an approval or disapproval authority over what you purchase?
Yeah, it's, it's a catch twenty-two, no, you don't, because I don't want to be calling somebody and saying, hey, I need a little chloride, we're gonna argue over four thousand dollars for three weeks. By the road goes up and dust.
Right. But would that be that, though? It's.
I mean, there has, there has to be an interaction, all I'm trying to say is, may, maybe I'm overreading it, but. It has to be an interaction there, I mean, that you, you have to meet with us at AOT, with A T O T meetings and understand all that stuff.
Usually a purchasing agent would be involved, would only be the process, so usually of purchase orders, which would come from either road commissioners. Or, or you guys would say, look, we need a new air conditioner in here.
Yeah, and I just, and, and like I said, I might be reading it wrong.
I did, but what you're saying is right, that they're not purchasing agent, that just means that they're processing the paperwork, purchasing. Originator of.
Right, I would cross off an exception of the road department, I'd take that off there, I would just say the purchasing, purchasing agent of town.
You know, just have to understand like, how we do it.
At the end, yeah, if the road listener came into the slideboard and said, this is not working, um. The town administrators and allowing me to get these supplies and I have the budget for it.
I mean, we're still use the same process where you.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't a policy on how you're doing things, that would probably fall more into the policy. Okay, town purchasing policy. It's just like the E M D purchasing.
Don't get changed the job, job description on the fly.
Yeah.
Did you?
Was there somewhere else where I hit?
Did you put anything in there about, you mentioned Dave, that, about, um. Their, some customer interaction, like covering when you two guys are here. Or, you know, like it's the town clerk or treasurer here, and something has to happen, or was that anything?
I think we'll just, we can discuss that with them when we're doing a job interview, because we don't want that to be their priority.
Yeah, I think too.
If you put it in here, that you might get the person hired, and that's all I want to do is giddy gab with whoever comes to the door, that's not what we want.
And what we can do too is close that door, the days we got to have.
Yeah.
Appointment only.
Seal them in, yeah, I like it.
I mean, actually.
No, it's true, you got.
It really should always been appointment only, or. Maybe, I mean, when the days, I mean, it's higher in the small towns, hey, appointment or, no.
No, but you're here, you should talk to him.
Fifteen minutes, like you're about to work, and you give me something.
Do you have anything at the beginning of job duties? To include but not limited or whatever you were born that as, is that, yes, this is what is done, but.
Yeah, including what not.
May or may not happen.
Including but not limited to.
Yeah, that's, that's good to put that in there somewhere.
Right, somewhere like, or even some way to make it that, okay, somebody's news might not, if you're not.
Right up there in parentheses, duties and responsibilities, you know, um, you could say not a comprehensive list or something.
Yeah.
So.
I can see somebody reading through this and go, um.
Yeah, but with the price tag, you're putting for.
Yeah.
Wages, this is.
I don't know, someone wants to work full-time at McDonald's, they can make fifty thousand dollars a year. Oh, yeah, they're paying, yeah, if you want it to work, you can, yeah.
People are making money right now.
Making money, fifty thousand is very much money.
This will go away with, they start to settle down, there'll be massive layoffs, that's just what's gonna happen.
I don't think there's gonna be any layoffs. I think there's such a shortage of.
The future, when prices go down, companies won't be able to keep on shelling on that kind of cash.
I think it looks good. Well, there's a couple of changes.
So, as.
Not the price of the product, it's great value of the money.
Flood zone administrators.
David doesn't want to be the zoning administrator anymore.
Well, um, I guess it's no real surprise that, um, it's a heck of a lot of work now, is this the only? But it happens, um, it's apparently the only one that's happened in recent times, I, in the past twenty or twenty-five years, thirty years.
Probably as a flood zone match, it'd be, I might, you might have more. Probably as a flood zone match would be, I might, you might have more. We can, we're gonna talk about that next, right?
Yes, I do have an update, yeah, but I just, I, I really. I've been gone through the process now, probably thirty, forty hours to do it. It's just this big steep learning curve. Requires a lot of attention to detail, the same things that require a town administrator. And, and someone that's in touch with the village here.
Yeah.
It just does.
Zoning administrator is appointed anyways.
Are you gonna get it anyway? You might never get one, I was crossing my fingers on that, you know, here it is. My real busy time and I'm, I go, get the case, great. But I think it really ought to be paid when it happens, because it is a buttload of work and. It's the same kind of work that the town administrator do.
Town administrator is gonna be here, you're here now, but you might not be, you might not be. Able to put that time in.
Exactly, with it, you know, if you had hired, if you had appointed somebody differently, like. I don't know, some of your other folks, not gonna pick anybody specifically, but you know, and all of a sudden that turns into a. Ten hour, fifteen, twenty hour week job for the next month or two months. What's that person gonna do? They can't do it, they're just gonna quit.
Right. Yeah, it needs to be the town administrator, they just.
The listers used to be, you know, it's just revolving door, well, I don't have the time to do that, so quit.
So per twenty four BSA, forty four, forty eight, the appointment of the zoning administrator is up to the planning commission. So this position's being put out on a select board, I mean, the.
It's always been appointed here as by the slideboard, so.
So we appointed, planning commission appoints it, but we get the approval from you guys prior to that, so it's a, it's a give and take. Um, so I'm not sure if that can be taken on there or not, I mean, I guess it can.
Could we put, uh, the ability to serve as?
Well, I think the planning, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have a list of people wanting that position, right?
After, after Wednesday night, you're gonna have everybody who've been terrified of the thought.
It's free, it's a, it's a, it's a free position, right? It's not paid.
I believe so.
It is not paid, it's not paid, so people want to line up, so I would think the planning commission would want to. Point it off to the select board to point it off onto the town administrator, that way that person can do it during the daily duties and it wouldn't seem like a big deal.
I was just trying to discuss it with the rest of the commission before, maybe, agreed to that.
You say you appoint them or?
We do appoint them, yeah.
And then what if we did disagree?
Then we find a new person, so we, the planning commission appoints, but a select board approves the recommendation. And same thing, before letting go of the current zoning administrator, the planning commission is the one who does it under the auspices of the select board.
So the planning commission appoints the town administrator?
So we did it wrong, yes.
BSA something.
So we just take it off.
Twenty four BSA, forty four, forty eight, planning commission appoints a zoning administrator with the approval of the select board for the municipality, but the municipality has adopted zone.
We don't have, um.
But we do have five.
Forty four.
Forty eight.
Forty eight, yeah, but we're considered a, we're considered a town without zoning by the state.
Think because it's strictly, the, so the zoning administrator is a federal.
I don't know, I'm reading this off.
We, you don't have a zone, you have a flood zoning administrator.
You may want to put that possible, would change that, reword that a little bit, but leave it on there.
Ability to serve.
Without choice.
Other towns, you know, they'll know what that means.
Other duties assigned by the select board is on here, so you could even take it off, that could be one of the other duties, falls in there.
Yeah. I just, you know, I raised that as a. Eminence departure or volunteer.
We'll leave it on there, we'll definitely, we'll, we'll definitely leave it on there, we found, find that, uh, the other statue that states. That the select board appoints. But if it's a planning commission, then you can't.
As a sign because. Unlikely. Come up unless you know, if one of these other buildings down here that's, if we're doing this flood, it all of a sudden burns or. Damage, then it's going to definitely come up. That's when this arises. So, okay, that was the overall. Is this a description that I would propose to post on our website and only refer to in the advertisement?
So do we want to leave the, do we just want to leave the wage at sixty thousand, just to not put seventy five?
You could, you could say sixty thousand and up or.
Pay to commensurate? No, I don't.
You put a, in, uh, uh, between.
If I'm looking for a job and I don't speak a number, I don't really then know. I mean, I have to dig.
Maybe go forty five to sixty five. Yeah, I, I like that better, because we went up to sixty because of negotiations. Forty five to sixty five. I think that would be a good place.
Yeah, and then, then if we want to go lower, on, you know, as far as hours. You know, if we don't want to go full, full time.
Well, say the person we interview, we really like, and they say they can only do ten of these things on this list, not all twenty.
So there is a town now, I forget which, that advertising, you know, our local papers for a, the court treasurer, I think it's all. That's in there, part time, full time available. Kind of advertisements, I'll look at that and see. Uh, there's another town not too far away from here advertising for a treasurer, they bought a hiring bonus. A full time. Treasurer, hired with benefits and a hiring bonus, it's, it's not much. And I don't say that.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, I'm not, I'm not, for myself, it's just, this is, that could be an environment we're hiring into, um, and you look in the Chronicle, there's. A town administrator or two being advertised right now, it's kind of a.
I thought Albany, they, they did theirs to, uh, have they eliminated their town clerk, did I see that was?
I think they. Treasure, right?
No, it was actually, it was actually.
Yeah, Debbie's getting done there, yeah, so.
Appointed.
So if this is somebody you're hiring, do they have to be a town resident or it can be anybody?
It can be anybody. It's actually. I'll say my, I'll say my personal feeling is I feel it's better to have someone that is not a resident. Nonbiased, nonbiased, no voting rights. However, you can't do it that way, but that's. Cause I tell you, I wouldn't, I, me, if I was looking for a job like that, I wouldn't want to be in that position in my own town, for that same reason.
Toughen up, is my talking about, I mean.
Deal with people like you.
Think about, think, think about, uh, road commissioner getting squatted, I mean, you can take more abuse than one of these guys are, as a local. I mean, I always, I always say that to John, I said, don't you ever work for a select board, you better remember who you're working for, is your neighbors.
Yeah.
And take a little pride in that, you know?
But.
So I don't. I don't think it's impossible.
Uh, but there's a lot more at play for the, everything that's going on in the town compared to just the, having the roads.
Maybe.
I mean, what, what Dave was saying is correct with trying to find the help and such, when you're guys try. You, you have a certain amount of this job is really necessary to help you do your job. Right, if you're honest, like, well, you know, so there's a certain amount of it, so maybe you'll see what happens, you put it out there, if you can't seem to get the higher level skills or. Then you may have to say, but we still need to get this other stuff done.
Right, we may be, I have someone.
Right, or just somebody who's more a clarkish administrator, at least in, you know, if you, in order to get a job done, because right now you're doing it, right, Dave?
I'm trying.
So. But if, so if you can't find the most perfect candidate.
Right.
You may have to compromise something, that's why with that, with range of ranges.
We, yeah, we get that covered, we, uh, position is open until fill, no, no need to hurry, right?
So, yeah, that. The advertisement is, is changed from the way you did it before. Um, I mean, I have in there that asks for the cover eleven resume, which you did before, but also contact information for two references. Some places ask for three, I think, from my own experience, two is adequate, more attainable for most people. When you go to three, you start to run into the. It's just hard to get sometimes. Or you get, you get two that are just not, were not worth it, and you can figure out which ones which.
So find a real good administrator, you may have to take one from another town.
Well, that's a.
Yeah.
I did put the wording in here, position open until fill, application they received, so. You gave deadlines, like it was a bid, but I recommend this approach. Just as they come in, review them, interview them. See if there's somebody out there that you're.
In theory, that sounds like a great idea, but in reality, the worst thing you have, I know.
The personage.
Sort of go back to that one, I had, I had read, read backwards, so the planning commission nominates an administrator and then the select board appoints.
And I still, which, that's fine, I still, this. That particular. I was just trying to find it, it, I think it falls because it's the national flood insurance program. If we were not luck floodplains, not to be part of the national flood insurance, I don't think we have to have. Flooding, a flooding zoning administrator, that's where.
I thought of that, the timing of that, when it came into play was ninety four.
When you, when you became.
And I think we had a massive flood that year, we had ice all the way up to where it brought us. And I'll bet you FEMA didn't just put in that flood plain zone. It's always been a great thing for me to be able to check off, because you have to hit so many points on your. Used to be like a checklist, a driveway, you know, and you had to have a certain amount of those to fill in.
Yeah.
So that's when, that's when that whole thing came into play.
For the money from the state, that, well, so FEMA, when we have, when we, like the two thousand nineteen flood, when you get the federal money. You get seventy five percent from FEMA no matter what. Um, then at the state level, there's the other twenty five percent. And, um, there's certain criteria you have to hit, one of those being part of the national flood insurance. Yeah, and then, um, having your, the local emergency management plan that we do, and then hazard mitigation plan. And then there's, so those three get us up to, I think we're up to the twelve and a half percent. Of that twenty five that the state gives us.
Okay, I got you.
And then there's one more thing we can do that not, that very few towns do, I've all, I've wanted to put it on my plate to try getting. I gotta remember what it is though, but it has something to do with your river corridor protection.
Okay.
Which is different than the flood zone, but once you get that one, I think you get up to seventeen percent from the state. Okay, out of the twenty five, just add, we went way off, way off there, but.
I would raise, I would love to get this, uh, posted.
I think, what, what did you say, forty five to sixty five?
So are we okay with a? So I'm, my thinking is we can post an advertisement without the underlying job description that I had for. And just not reference it here, while we continue to work the underlying job description.
Yep.
Uh, but see if we can get some nibbles or some vibes on just having it hosted.
Well, I said, the thing, you put the post in, then for job description, they contact. For if they want to pull jobs.
Words instead of like.
Yeah. No, I like it.
Okay, so I, as I understand it, I'm gonna fill in the numbers forty five to sixty five. And leave the rest of it alone, it's an advertisement. Can advertise this locally. We're agreeing on that?
Where else we? You could go down, you could go down south of the area, but.
Yeah, proposing the three newspapers, so, hell, the Chronicle.
Yes.
Four daily.
Seven Days has a huge job section.
The other place I keep like.
Right, Seven Days is, has a huge, and a lot of people do use it.
That it was, like, came out about, I don't know, six months ago, Swanton was looking for a town newspaper.
So here, here's the, like, the newspapers, but I think we should go on, I think we should get on. Couple of the online, like, indeed, or, or for on job, like, at least. My job, like, is the states.
I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to the towns too, I mean, it must.
I mean, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I get it out there, I, I, I don't just feel the papers to get out as much as they're used to.
It is hard, isn't it, you know, I don't buy them.
I buy. I usually sell twenty a day, twenty five a day now.
How many do you get?
Seventy, oh, we get in, they still give you twenty, but I don't know if it helps or not, but you send it back, but. Yeah, seventy a day, people don't read newspapers.
No, they read their phone or. Good job with that, Dave.
Looking at the other side of summer here. All right. Uh, moving on to flood zone permit updates, okay, now the real fun begins. So, uh. You know what we could do? We got a couple of things here.
Why you get that?
They've all been, uh, they've all been.
There's no, it's a. It's the basic.
Great, just search, I saw your questions, I haven't drafted that, okay.
He's just trying to make more money.
Yeah.
Most of them are good.
He bids.
Is. Established for the BFA.
Actually, that's.
Fairly straightforward.
I think you really are.
I'm sorry? My point, you get, you get done before the hearing. Okay. Right, so you're assuming that between the hearings and the thirty day.
Normally, you would normally respond fairly quick. Try, then you do that. It's not to mean that depressing. Assuming we can hire someone. Staining on a building.
Over there?
Yeah, from the flood.
Okay.
Dirt's nice.
If it's, you know, much of.
Right. I guess my, my thing is, are the Deroche's looking at? I mean, I'm sure he's looking at things going quickly. So the hearing is on the fourth. I'm not sure how much weight that additional use permit will hold if it doesn't have.
Yeah, let's build one. He's already proposing to do that.
It is good for.
It's just a question of.
Money is quite a bill.
So that we can measure it. And he can build higher than that, I mean, he's gonna, he knows where it is. You just get a little bit over, so, so I have a couple of things to get at in flood zone permit update. Um, just a reminder, we're, I'm meeting as a zoning administrator with the. With the Board of Adjustment, which is also the Planning Commission, their Wednesday meetings. And it's also been noticed all over the world, basically, uh, for fifteen days or longer. For all the different people that might have a piece of that pie, all the six adjoining property owners. Uh, the permit applicant himself. And the whole town. With all the Ukraine signage. So anybody that wants to have a bite of the apple can come to that Wednesday meeting, they can join by his own, or they can come in person and have their, have that. The, what I have up here on the screen is the. A draft of the conditions that I'm proposing be. In what's called the conditional use permit, which is what Mr. Drosch is applying for, is a conditional use permit. Meaning that these conditions apply to what he's doing, and anything he does after that. The conditions now apply to that parcel, so he can rebuild his property. Uh, as long as meet the conditions, he can. Make some changes to it, as long as he continues to meet the conditions. Uh, it's not a one shot deal, it applies.
And who comes up with these conditions to state or?
Well, we did, we wrote the regulation back in ninety four, which I assume we basically copied from the state at FEMA. And the, um, there's a couple of biggies in here that tend to cost money. Number one and number two, uh, first one is he, he has to have all the necessary permits from the government agencies. That require them. Specifically, the federal government and the state government. So I have actually a letter for you to sign tonight, hopefully you agree. Uh, requesting from the town going to the act two fifty board district seven and requesting a jurisdictional opinion on whether that. His application requires an act two fifty permit. Um, it's something he has not done, and he's not been inclined to do, but it's a. But the town has a definite interest in knowing whether he requires an act two fifty permit or not.
Absolutely.
I have that letter draft, I need to print it. If I don't get it tied up, I'm seeing tomorrow.
So that was the impression that the, that juris- jurisdictional opinion should be started by the residents itself.
Well, I talked at length, considerable length with the district seven coordinator, and that was one of the topics, and no, it doesn't have to be. Any interested party can ask for. Okay, you, the planning commission can ask for, the town can ask for, zoning guy can ask for, I think it has more weight. Logically, comes from the town.
And theoretically, under an acre, they don't have to anyway, right? What did she say?
Yeah, well, that was, that was.
Under an acre, you don't.
Was for the previous.
So there's a question about. Well, the issue is not the flood zone, but the fact that his parcel deed. And he's being taxed on one point two acres, I think. It's actually in the deed, two parcels separated by the road. But it, and again, I had a lengthy discussion. This sentence about this, and she just said, nah, you're gonna have to ask, because she wasn't willing to say on the phone. Um, whether that, his building is on half an acre, and then the parking lots on a little over a half an acre. So, one point two acres, the. Is it, is it an acre? Is it not an acre? And she said it would probably hinge on what he's using that parking lot for. You look at the previous folks, McDermott, they were definitely using that parking lot as part of the business. Is he definitely using that, or is it part of the excavation business where his? Sons are parking stuff. I don't know, you know, and I.
Isn't it the same? Same trucks are parked on both sides of roads.
But the business is, whatever he's doing in that garage, making money, I think he serves the vehicles. On trailers, that's my understanding, and what I saw going on. You know, is, is, is he, does he have to have that parking lot across the street in order to conduct it, it's probably got an inch on that. But again, it's not for us to decide, that's for the state. The town's interest is that he, in fact, engages with the state at some point, and we're gonna force that by requesting a jurisdictional opinion. Because the state will then go to him, engage with him on that.
Sue, her name's Sue something.
Now, and you said.
Nice, she came up to my shop, you have to do it.
I agree.
Terrible, when you, when your person asks to sign all that paperwork and you get an act two fifty permit. Pay ten percent of the estimated cost of the project and all that stuff, but.
And you've stated that you mentioned this to real.
Yes, more than once, he's been told the same thing by Sasha Fielder, the state floodplain manager.
And he's just reluctant to do it, or?
Uh, no, yes. He doesn't want the added burden.
Where you, where it came on us is. You'd mentioned to me that the tax bill is acting like it's a single property.
And that's the assessors make that, this is that choice, uh, the deed, his deed listed. It's a single deed with two separate parcel listings, because that's the way McDermott's came up with it.
I think. Because someone's probably mentioned.
It might have been the people before McDermott's went out and bought two parcels across the street and combined them to make that parking lot. I assume they tore a house down or something, but anyway, it's. It's not a cut and dry thing, it just isn't, unfortunately, it's consistent with the work I've been getting lately.
So, what's the, what's the base elevation down there?
So I do have clarity on that, the state, the floodplain manager, and somebody else in A and R has recommended that we use the results of the. Halloween flood, November first, twenty nineteen, the high watermark there in the village as the base flood elevation, which is the hundred year flood level. There was a one percent chance every year that that's gonna happen. And FEMA requires, in our own regulation requires. Things happen in relation to that base flood elevation. So our own flood regulation requires that he build, when he rebuilds his garage, and he rebuild that to at least the base flood elevation.
How much higher is that, you think, right now than? Whereas garages, it's not much, because the garage's.
He's proposing his own permit request to raise it two feet. And he's done that based on where the water. Is in the garage, you can go in there and see it, there it is. Nothing like a hazardous waste spill of oil to.
Right.
I'm not sure what it was, but something marked that in there, permanent, so. What I would like us to do as a town, I'm gonna, I'm asking the select for tonight, is that we should establish that. We should go in there, we should hire the surveyor to go in and establish that base flood elevation and monument it, because it's not important. It's, it's not only important to. It's important to the village, to have that established. That, that we as the town establish that, and we already have a fund, a reserve fund set aside that does that kind of thing anyway.
Yeah, mitigation.
Flood mitigation.
So that's probably not, that wouldn't be that expensive, I don't believe. Especially if you use like a water line in his building, or.
It, it's about a thousand bucks to get anybody like that to come out these days.
Right, yeah.
And it's. Probably gonna be a devil. Have I, I made any calls, but.
Yeah.
Engage.
So I kinda, I got mixed feelings about it. No, I'm, I'm not saying the recommendation isn't right, I guess my concerns are for the Derashees and their ability to get going on their reconstruction. And how much the jurisdiction approval is gonna delay that.
It'll be at least thirty days, even if he, if he has to go through act fifteen, he gets a permit, and it has to be posted for thirty days.
So the important thing, again, about, I, I didn't point this out, I need to, about the act two fifty piece of this, is it only applies to his addition. It does not apply to him replacing what he already had. He can rebuild what he had, no act two fifty involvement whatsoever, Kirsten made that very clear.
So if he's in the same footprint.
If he's rebuilding in the same footprint, there's no act of it, end of story. It's his addition that might trigger the need for jurisdictional opinion, and again, we've, myself and. Floodplain manager have also tried to make that clear, you, you're, you're at, there's a. There's a risk to that, the risk is you get permits. So he's not held up in rebuilding his existing footprint. From act two fifty, he is held up by the town, he's gotta get this conditional permit in order to be rebuilt.
And he's done nothing.
For act two fifty, not done the work, unless he's done it since I talked to Kirsten on Friday.
This is that hearing. Well, she would just come out and take a look, and she would know yes or no, it wouldn't take her long to, she. Look at it, and she'd say yes or no, because she came to me and said yes or no.
Yeah, I think her issue is the land size.
Yeah, because your land's over one acre, so.
I was wondering, too, you mentioned those deeds, is that something you could run by the other person, Kristen?
No, our, our real estate lawyer.
Why?
She's not gonna be authoritative on that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't she be authoritative on how many acres is?
Well, yes, but we don't, we don't really, we know what that is, there's a survey, real headed survey.
But you said there was two.
Yeah, but we're still within, we're still in the flood zone, so does the flood zone, does, does the flood zone make? Any property, no matter what size fallen. That's, that, am I right in understanding that, because it's in the flood zone, the question is on if any size parcel is. Not act two fifty, that's not the.
The flood zone doesn't impact on that question. That I'm aware of.
I'm surprised, because they're really concerned about water runoff and, oh my, environment EPA, it just triggers off. We act two fifty, then it, then it's, it just keeps going.
Right, so the act two fifty for his addition, if he's in fact required to get a permit for his addition, the act two fifty. Um, requirements for what the level he then needs to raise that addition to is two feet higher than what the town will require. Yeah, he's gonna have to be two feet above the base.
Truck in the garage.
Right, then there's other concerns about.
It's so close to the road.
He's gonna be building closer to the water, and there's, then act two fifty addresses that as well, and in, in ways that I don't. I don't know, but they're gonna look at that.
So, yeah, so we, sounds like we definitely need that jurisdiction.
I don't think the town needs it, we need to go get it, but we can proceed on this action. The town's conditional permit and proceed without having that jurisdictional thing, we just go get it, we just go ask for it. It's, it's up to him to meet the conditions of our permit, conditional permit, which includes finding out. Other permit or. So. We should not, as a board of adjustment in town, wait, we can't, we have, we're up against a deadline too. This has to happen, has to be heard by the son of the name, so. And I, I would just recommend, if it's. Um, not, well, we can discuss that, that, it doesn't, it's not really a select work topic. Um, what I wanna get out of you guys tonight is, are you willing to pay establishing that DFE? Uh, because if you aren't, then that's gonna fall on the permit fee as well.
I think it's something to have for the rest of the. I don't think he, I don't think he should be.
He's got enough straps.
Yeah, I, I don't think he should be the guy who has to pay to find out the, yeah, the flood level line.
I agree, I think that's a government responsibility.
Yeah.
Um, we, if.
Can you get a grant for that?
It's been ongoing for years to redo the flood maps. And that was the only other thing I'd ever done as zoning administrator, was try to get them, uh, back in twenty seventeen to include this area in their special study area. So we have. But they haven't finished it yet, it's not gonna be released till later this year, early next year. In which case, we'll probably have more clarity, I don't know that Josh, they established the DFE, but we'll have a better map. But the maps we have now are just absolutely pitiful, we, the only way we can, reason we can prove his properties in a flood zone, because it floods. We have pictures of it, we've seen it. If, if we had none of that. We couldn't prove it, the maps are just that awful, so. But if I could get a motion.
I'll make a motion to. Have David Barlow get a surveyor, come up with the base flood elevation. To the town, or that area.
And use the reserve flood.
So. All those in favor?
And.
Thank you.
As far as a surveyor, is this gonna, is this gonna impact the speed at which Mr. Rush can rebuild?
Well, so that's the thing, he, he can.
Only from the standpoint that he'd have to do it if you guys don't, so it's the same, basically the same step. It doesn't mean it can't be concurrent. Uh, but it does depend somewhat on the ability to get somebody here.
Well, you could ask him if he's already looked into that, because he, he wants to know what that is, doesn't he?
I think he's been using the line that's on the building, he of course has access to it. He stated he's willing to hire a surveyor as part of the finished product, which we need to require him to do anyway.
So no, he really can't start his building, because he don't know what elevation to put it at.
Well, he can always, uh, he can just build it so it's sufficiently higher. Because he's got it right there, and it's literally opened the door to the existing building, and there's the line.
He's gonna pour foundation. So, so if he leaves his frost wall up, up at least a couple of feet higher, in case he has to go up two feet higher, and he has a curb still. He can build his building, but he didn't wanna make it tall.
I was thinking that the curb maybe, I'm bothered, it's just the base of the floor.
And he's gonna do the floor last anyway, so it really wouldn't impact him, no.
I just.
Buys your garage door header height, he might, he might not be able to put those in. The act two fifty would though, because if he's doing, he's planning to do that all in one shot, right? Not build in with his footprint and then add on another.
I think the act two fifty thing is, is, is his long hole in the tent. We've been telling him that, doesn't wanna hear it.
Yeah, but jurisdictional opinion comes back saying that it applies, that's a whole lot of panic.
You know, I wanna do, it's just, you know, I'm at a cross, and I wanna do the right thing. From the governmental point of view, but God, I know. I know the stress they're under, just with what they've gone through and getting that thing rebuilt, I mean. We think of a building as a big progress, and just want, I mean, I, they just want it done. So they can go on with their lives, and be able to wash and work on their equipment. And just in no way, shape, or form, I wanna hear from a higher survey and say, I'm gonna be here in forty five days, or. Same with, I think Kristen's good down there in act two fifty.
They won't even be able to put a drain in though without a permit. Honestly, there's no drain, drains are. No, no.
I'm not even worried about the drain, I'm just worried about holding them up, I mean, I know.
Well, we. All this list are no choice.
Yeah.
It's right, it's right, our regulation, and our regulations right on what you need to do to meet FEMA reference. As they were nineteen ninety four.
I guess the only thing is the jurisdictional, jurisdictional.
Well, the jurisdictional opinion has to happen, it's just a question of who asks, he's made it clear he's not going to ask.
So he's, you know, he's, he's not helping himself, I understand, I understand his thought process, you know, he, we all hate government.
David, the J O doesn't affect the flood insurance part of it, right, that's completely separate actors of. David, the J O doesn't affect the flood insurance part of it, right? That's completely separate actors of these types. Or does that also have a play on it? Because from a town perspective, that would be the bigger stick for us, right?
If we were, if we let him get away without it? Yes.
I'm not even going, yeah, I'm just saying, if you just look at act two fifty by itself and a flood zoning, are the two of them related from a flood type insurance?
Only if you don't do it.
Okay.
So let's say he's not subject to an act of fifty permit. If he's, if he is in fact. Absolutely gotta have that addition. If he can absolutely, if he can make do without it. He he can just get this and go.
That's, yeah, that's true.
He's probably gonna just not add on.
These are the orders, right?
He's saying he he months ago that he he'd ordered his his.
Therefore weeks.
Yes, I mean, it's. As you can see, you can see why I don't like this job.
Yeah, you're not making friends.
But and you see why Newport City. Didn't manage to keep their guide, but what, a couple hours?
Right, coming up with this document, it's a lot of work, right?
And so this list, which the board of justice can see, well, they've seen already from me. Is right out of our. Sorry, our regulation is right out of the the write-up that the state flood plane administrator did and. Chapter verse, and really, as once you get past the whole raising up the floor, the rest of it is kind of no brainer stuff. Okay, so it's. All kind of, and I don't think he had any wastewater treatment stuff in the building that burned, so. No, it's, you know, it's just, you know, keep your hazardous waste up and, you know, kind of. Easy to do stuff, it's the first two that are. Grinding ones, I got it, but it's just. So um that covers that as far as I'm. Let me go forward and get that DFE established on. Town's time. And um I'll get that letter for the. J O for you, Scott, print it out. Well, it may in fact come back and say, you know me. I give it, you know, it depends on what he tells. You know, I I can't go down there and coach him, I'm not going to, but. I'm not saying anybody should.
I'm just gonna say it was brought to my attention and my recommendation by, you know, the flood. So the administrator.
He's usually around Mondays and Fridays.
Okay. All right, so that was great, even that in this meeting, it's great, I can't wait for.
Oh, you're bringing. You're having the meeting with Mr. Dorachi Wednesday?
Board of Adjustment hearings, so hopefully he comes. In one form or other. Virtually or in person, I would assume he'll come in person. Okay.
Do you have those minutes here?
Minutes, I'm sorry.
I'm sure like in Newport, only green. If they have less than one acre, they would. Anywhere there's trucks.
So I didn't print the minutes for you guys, you want me to table, you want to table it or? Okay, other business, we have um. Um people festival.
I know, I know that you guys wanted to know. So we come up with Saturday, August twenty seventh. We kind of turn around since September once, but they didn't work. With a rain date for the fireworks, it's Sunday, October twenty, August twenty eighth. So Saturday for the. Fall festival and if it doesn't happen, Sunday for the fireworks. Yep, only because I'm not sure when school starts, but then the next weekend's a holiday weekend and then it's part of their weekend, which.
She had told me the one before and it was a week apart. But that was before you changed the date.
Yeah, so I mean, we've got. Benders, we've got a couple of bands that are interested. You know, uh face painters. So we got a lot of the same.
The same guy, yeah.
Hopefully with the train, he's off buying a mechanical bull this week, so.
Bring that down. I was gonna say, I'd love to see that happen.
Rector.
No, she she can ride a horse, she rode and the guy and then some guy came over and gave the guy fifty dollars to lose her. And the guy goes, see ya, right? She stayed on for like another minute and a half. It was funny, I got it all on video. Anyway.
Okay, cool. It is, okay, great. And then we also had the painting of um. Humanville Road, I believe, are.
I think we took care of that back at the beginning. Yeah, we're not doing it this year.
Yeah, we've got that on hold now anyway.
I threw in the folder with warrants. You've been invited to a.
So the fire department, city Newport, you're accordingly invited to our end to the annual banquet of the Newport Fire Department Association. To be held at the East Side Restaurant Thursday, May nineteenth, starting at six o'clock in the evening. Members of the Fire Fighters Association, obviously, I'm gonna be there, but you two are invited. Their mic's gone before. The the ward service. Wards.
Is that why our budget is so high to these firefighters? Cuz they have these fricking twenty thousand dollar parties? I can't.
Sorry, that that money comes out of the association's money, not the city's budget, oh, okay.
Text me the day before.
What day is it?
Thursday.
Yeah, I'm usually done work Wednesday.
Excellent. So um I put the.
Mr. Barlow's, you can go to. You deserve a free meal after all the work you've been doing.
You do, it was Thai place, maybe. Is there any change on the San Souci billing?
So I had asked Brian to review it and get back to us. Have you heard nothing? He was on vacation. You can call, yeah, why don't you call? You gotta call him about something else.
I do.
No, I don't know.
But I can.
Thank you.
I'm thinking that. At the very least, we should respond in some way expressing our. Concern. But.
From the attorney.
Need to hear from.
Right, Brian, oh, yeah, we wanna, yeah, we wanna know, cuz.
Cuz we just needed.
He's gonna, eventually, he's gonna wanna get paid.
Or is he just fishing or?
You know, too, we, we had a good discussion. About that, you know, as me as a taxpayer, if I see something. My my rated change and I come down here. And ask Kate or some bill for a reason why. Without grieving, don't charge me for any information. What's the difference with a little intel asking them?
Yeah, prove it, why, how did you come up?
Even if they haven't agreed at this point. Why, why, why is this, why are we getting whacked like this for that?
I mean, we are. I guess, how do you look at that? Because we 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 are paying. Brian, the time that he took the public records request. Yeah, but it's all whale as hell, a lot of us.
We also made this, you guys made the decision to engage him to do that task. You could have.
No, that was all, that was never, that was all. Oh, no, we made the decision to have.
Made it in some way or shape, shape or form, otherwise it would have been Ned doing. Or pass somebody else, you know.
I don't believe um San Souci. Really gave us a formal, did they give us a formal binder stating? No, but we paid him the twenty five thousand dollars to assess the landfill. Did they give us? Here's our assessment, or did we just get something in the email? We haven't.
Well, we didn't have a hard copy, but they did email us. I briefed it, it's like we're being. Sometime ago.
Now.
And I'm still saying.
That's all we should have given. Casella, this is what we got.
But I think I bet you the public, the public records request was more than just a report. It was emails and things that went back and forth between everybody of what, that's what I had to pull up, that's what Ned had to pull up, that's what. Brian's office had to pull. It was a full-on public records request for anything having to do with. I had a list of twenty search terms I had to do.
So what is our policy in the guys' public records?
Can't be a policy, cuz.
How how can we pay one entity to uh? Do one and not another?
That was my point.
But we can recover so some costs from Casella. Our cells as a medicine talent. There's a, there's a law on that.
Yes.
But it's it's quite limited and.
Brian was, they were doing what, I think it was sixty cents a minute or something like that, but. But they, but. If I recall, you would have to ask Brian this, I seem to recall out of this whole thing. That they were asking San Souci for information for stuff. On behalf of us and they were not giving it. So then they it pretty much came down to, and I could be recalling this wrong, but it came down to. The way I understood it was that. They said, okay, Casella, if you want it, you're gonna have to go to them directly.
Well, I think what happens is, I think in. Gibbs. Cost estimating, he has his. Super sauce numbers that he uses and he doesn't wanna give away his trade secrets to. Anybody because that's how what supposedly makes him so great and so accurate. Sure, right, that, like, you know, if you have your mechanic in the back room, you don't wanna show him what you do to make them things run when everybody else hasn't blow up. So this guy, I can see why he wouldn't wanna give all the information, but in this case, I think.
But as far as I was concerned, the the way I thought this, there was, it wasn't asking for the whole reappraisal and everything behind it, it was. Getting emails of what was sent to everything.
But I just don't think it should cost.
No, I don't.
Us, the town. Half as much as the whole reappraisal to get a little bit of information. That they've already done the work, they've done the work. Did they throw away the work?
Yeah, yeah, I know, and then like, and we'll pay for it again if it goes score, we'll pay for it three dollars.
Oh. Yeah.
So, and I still, so uh. I think I mentioned this, am I, am I wrong in that, that he? In his contract, he is to defend his costs until through the BCA. So this isn't, this isn't defending his costs?
This is, because it's a public records request, it didn't go through the channels that it would be doing here.
They didn't breathe it.
Yeah.
So there was no BCA. So I think. Within his, now out the, outside that window.
The town did give him sixty thousand dollars for the work he did and we paid him promptly and we paid him on time. He could have did a good faith thing for the town saying, well, this is the same stuff I would have to give them if they did grieve.
Instead, we just get. We get two bills.
They were on a hunt for, they they were on a hunt for the. Not being so. The the letter, I have to work it up, but it was, it was. Not being notified correctly in their mind and they were trying to figure out where that came from, that was the public request. You give them everything and anything.
So if they aggrieved. And they made that public records request, would it have been free?
Because it's not part of the grievance.
I don't really know the answer to that.
If you sell it illegally, grief, then you should show me that. So they were prepared for the grievance meeting, would have been a cost then?
Well, okay, yeah, no, yes, you gotta, yeah. If the same information was being asked for when they grieved, yeah, it would have been better than that. That would be the way I would look at it.
And that's a question for the lawyer, right?
So I would.
Question we have with the Brian app.
Yeah.
What the hell?
So I guess let's, let's.
So.
I guess, yeah, find out and send us an email.
Are are we okay with the Orleans Fire Department contract? Yeah, we're good.
Tell me you checked.
The warrants in there. Um the only thing is that I was concerned is that the way the contract was updated, they didn't get, unless he sent the John send you another one. It was not updated by Orleans, it was updated by Ned. That was my only concern with that contract. There's two parts of that. The contract we voted on that night when it came to sixteen thousand was updated by Ned, not by.
Yeah, you have to, guys. But didn't Maryland send you one last Friday?
That was the invoice, not the contract. Now Ned did send the signature page of that original contract or that contract we looked at to John. But they could easily take it and say, okay, this was, which they didn't cuz of the invoice, but. If it was coming down to anything legal. Like he only sent the signature page, not with the updated amount.
So we could just add, why don't you just send John an email and just have their girl send us the new contract? They were, we've already signed it. They went to sign page, but just updating.
Just to full the the new, right, sign, signed contract. And you can even say due to. We are not able to find this, the fully, fully executed signed contract.
Yep, okay. We'll do that. So that brings us to review warrants and sign.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants, well. No, I didn't have, there was one unit first that was eighty bucks, but I didn't know it was anything.
It was that one, that one didn't bother me so much was the, I think I replied to you, David, Debbie was thirty four dollars for laundry bag.
Yeah, there was one bag on all of them.
Wasn't it thirty four bucks on one of them?
I guess sixty seven.
I think there was one like eighty something.
Yeah, what is that?
There's these little things sneaking into these bills lately.
So who's responsible for chasing that now? Y'all looking at me? I mean, if it's, it's me, it's me.
Well, you said you used to get them, right?
I used to get them and I would. I would just brutalize, I would say, wow. Thirty four dollars for a bag.
And you would call them and.
And then I met, uh, there was a guy I hadn't seen the other day. And I said, well, we've had a couple of questions lately. And I basically told him, same thing I've always told him, cuz you know, we born in prom. It's got a little tear and you ain't gonna fix it. But you know, like it was forty bucks, the the one was for eighty, didn't John have a uh, or I might have had a new coat.
On this time?
Was it eighty?
We're back, so this one is.
Then the laundry bags one really got me angry, I don't, I didn't understand that, that was.
You know, a while ago, we had one that was like a hundred and forty. Jacket or sweatshirt or something.
Yeah.
That was the only. I agree. When those come in, I'd say send them to him and.
Well, he emails something to me now.
So I'll make a motion except the. Warrants as they are provided.
So move. All those in favor?
I propose uh that number twelve has arrived, just in the nick of time.
I make a motion that we adjourn. All those in favor?
Major eight eleven. Let me stop the recording. Thanks, Dan. Let me stop the recording. Thanks, Deb.